Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. It is four o'clock. You could stand with the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to adjust the agenda just a little bit because we have a couple of folks from First Student who are bringing us something that I think everybody will find exciting. So...
You ready?
Yeah, we're ready.
Thank you.
Sawyer? So, we have First Student here tonight to talk about an app that we are going to be launching in District that will talk about how parents can look at the bus routes of their children and know where the buses are. They'll go a little more in detail for you and explain it. The app should be ready for launch somewhere in April, so they'll talk a little bit about that as well. But no further ado.
Okay. Thanks Greg, and good afternoon everyone. Thanks for inviting us today. I'm Dave Farweather. I'm the area general manager for First Student, so I have responsibility for the three states, including the entire state of New Hampshire. And to my right is Stacy Morse. Stacy is our location manager out of our North Hampton location, not too far from here, just north of here a little bit. We're going to talk about the First View app a little bit. So this is our bus tracking app. Greg is passing out just kind of a high-level overview of the app. And we'll walk through it a little bit. But basically, this is a technology that we introduced probably about a year, a year and a half ago. You know, it was certainly important. It's been well-received. I can tell you that in my area, it's been fully, or it's about to be fully implemented at the Timberlane School District. And if you're interested, I can give you references there, and you can speak to some people over there, and they can give you a testimonial as to its use and effectiveness. And I can tell you that they've been very happy with it thus far. So, taking a look at the handout here, and I'm on page two there, what is First View? So, just really, it's a bus tracking app. It really has two components to it. There is a District Dashboard, okay, which allows just District personnel to view the status of each of our bus routes each day. So you can, you'll get a view of all our bus routes, on-time performance, who's running on time, who's not running on time, reasons why. It also enables the District to send out alerts. And I guess we can get that on, probably on the next page there. On page three is a good overview of some of the features of the District Dashboard component of First View. So, centralized data, so this is for the District's use. Real-time bus tracking. The third point there, the third bullet, is what I was talking about with the parent alert. So there's a feature there where you can send out alerts to the parents that take advantage of the app, and I'll talk about that. That's the second feature of First View. There's the District Dashboard, and then the parent app is the second feature. Security of the dashboard, so you know, you can, you know, the District can control who has what access within the District based upon your own security protocols. And our customer support, our implementation and customer support team is pretty robust. I mean, Greg may be able to speak to that a little bit, too. I know he's been dealing with some of our support folks out of our Cincinnati headquarters as we prepare to roll this out for the Hampton School District. So, those are some of the features of the District Dashboard. The next page, page four, kind of gives you a little bit of a snapshot of what the dashboard looks like. Down at the bottom there, it'll give you a visual of how it's laid out in terms of route name, run code, scheduled start times for the route, actual start time, so you can see if there's any variance in the scheduled start time versus the actual start time of that route. School arrival, scheduled school arrival versus the actual school arrival. And then, to the far right there, it'll give you the status, whether it's running on time, delayed, or what have you. Okay? Those are some high-level features of the District Dashboard. Only District personnel can see that, all routes. As we move into the parent app component of First View, that's on page five, where it lists some of the features of the parent app. Some information there that you saw under the District Dashboard in terms of the tracking, the parent alert messaging. The big difference between the District Dashboard and the parent app is the parent can only see the route that their child is riding. They can't see all the routes, only their child's route. Okay? And again, there's, you know, customer support there. You know, you have a, and I talked about Timberlane a little bit, and I'll share this with the group in terms of how we rolled it out with the Timberlane School District. So they're fully, they're fully integrated with the District App, the District Dashboard at this point. Love it. Sandy Hodgkins is the Transportation Coordinator at Timberlane, if you'd like to reach out to her. I've spoken to her. She has, she's given me her permission to, for you guys to reach out to her if you'd like. Big fan of the District Dashboard, very happy with it. We are just starting to roll out the parent app feature. And we've tested the parent app, all right, several times over the last couple of months. And they've been very, very controlled rollout. You know, this is, this is a nice feature for the District, too. You can decide which parents or how you want to roll it out, would you like to trial it? So in their case, Dr. Metzler, Superintendent in Timberlane, actually had children riding our school buses. So he said, "You know what? I want to be the first parent app test." All right? So it was a very controlled rollout, was my point, on the parent app part of it. And they were happy enough that now we're going to roll it out to, they're going to roll it out and make it available to the population. Yeah?
So, parents download an app onto their phone, okay? And then, basically, they can hit the app, and they can find out where their child is on a bus route, and they'll know where, how long to wait, or not wait, or...
Yeah. At this point, they know what child, what route and bus their child is assigned to, all right? So they can follow that bus.
Right.
Okay? In the future, all right, we want to get to a point, or have the technology where we can actually, you know, you know if your child's on the bus or off the bus at any certain time. So, we're not there yet, but we plan on getting there.
Incredible.
Yeah. Yeah, it's pretty slick, and it's getting some good reviews.
So this works basically like the Uber app, correct? Where you know where your car is at all times until pickup?
Yeah, I think so. I haven't powered up the Uber.
Well, I know.
My kids are, for sure, yeah. Yeah, same thing, though.
Same thing?
Yep.
I think people can relate to the Uber app, because a lot of people utilize Uber. It's similar, and we're looking at it from the parent's perspective.
I think one of the, excuse me, the nice features about this, too, or the security feature, is that it's not that the parent can see where the bus stops, or every stop, it's, you know, they're not seeing every place that the bus is stopping. So they're seeing where the bus is going and estimating the time that they get to their stop. So...
Thank you. Yeah, so, so, thank you, Stacy, for that clarification. So, so there's some different ways to roll out the parent app. So typically, you roll out a District Dashboard first, and then the parent app when the District is ready to do that.
I'm going to clarify, this app works both on Android and Apple.
Correct.
Yes.
Yep. Page six gives you a little bit of a visual in terms of what a parent would see for the bus which their child is riding as it relates to their stop, as Stacy described. And again, start, stop information, scheduled arrival time. And again, then with all this, on the right side there, you can see some reminders in terms of time and distance, and then you have the whole parent alert feature, too, that can come from the District on this as well.
So if a bus breaks down, and they have to call First Student and another bus? Doesn't happen often, but it happens. An alert goes out to all the parents?
Yeah, yeah. So, great question, all right? So, yeah, the alert would go out to the parents. And so the question often comes up, how seamless is that in terms of the tracking mechanism? Because in that case, typically, we're going to, you know, the bus is pulled over in a safe spot. We get another bus out there, we safely move kids over, and we proceed, right? So, the key to that whole, to make that seamless in terms of the tracking app, is the dispatcher, all right? So the dispatcher needs to reassign that vehicle to that route, correct?
Has to be, yeah, immediately reassigned, and then they'll be able to, the information will transfer to that vehicle.
Yeah.
So, this is pretty much established routes? Wouldn't work for field trips, sports trips?
We're not there yet?
No.
Yep, yep. This is just for the home-to-school routes at this, at this point. Great question.
I think that's where you need it most, anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
If a child is taking a different bus to go to, let's say, a different babysitter, or they're taking an after-school late bus because they've stayed after for activities, is there any tracking for that?
No, this is, yeah, it's just going to, it's just going to track the regular home-to-school stop, all right? Another great question. And so that kind of gets to what I talked about before, to technology, future technology, where we can actually, you know, there'll be, you know, our plan is, you know, cards for swiping, and so you know who's on the bus, who's off the bus at any given time. And, you know, some of that will be dependent upon kids actually using their cards, too, right? So that's a big challenge there, so...
So, I'm guessing in a school, I don't know if you agree as well as you, the District screen might be in an office with a secretary or...
Yeah, it might just be a login that I can get through from my computer, or if we gave it out to the secretaries, it'd be a discussion we'd have about who would have access to that screen. They could do it from my computer, probably.
It's all web-based, I assume, that...
Yep, yep. And I think the remaining page just talks about dedicated customer support, hours availability. Again, I think, you know, our best testimonial of that would probably be maybe talking to Timberlane, and talking to Sandy, and about what her experience has been with that in terms of support. And it's been good by all accounts, so...
I don't want to bring up cost, but I'm going to bring up cost. Can we absorb the costs? Do we have a budget?
Kathleen, as I understand, it's no charge?
No charge.
No charge.
It's a value add.
Yep. Well, isn't that great?
Trying to stay ahead of things.
So we're moving forward with it, I'm guessing? You don't need to vote for us, do you?
Unless you want to do a vote, we didn't anticipate that, but we will continue to move forward and work through all the logistics.
When will we have this rollout, effective?
April.
April of this year?
Yeah.
And when will, that's the dashboard?
That'll just be the dashboard.
And when will the parent app be available?
That's really, yeah, that's something we would collaborate on, when you guys feel like you're ready to go there with the parent app, and how you want to roll that out.
So we could, we could look at, say, a September rollout date?
Yeah.
We currently have a place on the website where all of our District Apps reside. So if you go to the SCU 90 homepage, there's a link there to a public portal. And there we have folders for Android and Apple for all the apps the District currently offers. So we'll simply, when we're ready, place that app into those folders as well, as a shortcut to where you download it, at the prospective stores, and people can download it. And I assume as codes we would issue out to them, the login to have the account for their child, so...
Depending on how it works with our portion of it, our rollout portion of it, right, maybe in June, we might try a few, just to experience it, so that we know.
Oh, no, I was looking at a test before.
Tests in June.
That's why I said September.
That's right.
That's why I went out to September.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to be clear that we, if all goes well with our portion of it, then we would do some testing, maybe towards the end of the year. Weather's nice, I'm not worried about snow and ice and delays most of the time. I mean, you get an occasional bus breakdown, but very occasional, very occasionally.
We're envisioning getting that code out to them, it's probably for our Power School parent portal, where I have to talk with Pam about adding a custom field. I assume they'd be able to send us the codes in a CSV file that we could import right into Power School and have it aligned with the child, and then when the parent logs into the portal, be able to see that code there. So, they don't want to download the app right away, and they forget, and it's two months later, and they've heard how great the app is, they can go into the portal, see the code there, and use it at that point, so...
We see this as really beneficial, especially on those cold mornings, and what time's the bus coming? You don't want the youngsters out at the bus stop for too long, especially with some of the temperatures and conditions that we have experienced this year, so...
Great, and consensus here is to move ahead?
Well, I'd like to just go on Kathleen's note, you know, I think it's great we move out with the dashboard in April. But I think, as Kathleen noted, that June we do a test. You know, let's take one school, you know, and test the parents app before we do a rollout.
We would probably...
To make sure all the bugs will work out.
Yeah, I always like to work with the PPA, and select some parents to be our testers, if you will, and do it very slowly, because obviously you don't want to jump into something that...
No, but I think we should take one school. Okay.
Okay, well, thank you.
Very good. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Want me to stay?
Does anybody have any questions for Greg?
Nope.
Thank you for your work on getting two grants from the Lego League and Teddy Month Savings Bank.
Yeah, I'd really like to thank them. It's two years in a row they've helped support us, so that's great.
I had a quick question.
Thanks, Grace, very much.
Thank you. How many access points would a school like Hampton Academy need total? I'm just curious.
Because we're one-to-one with every kid, and a desire to be densely populated so that there are no dead spots, remember that every access point can handle about 30 computers. So, we put one in every main classroom where they're classroom. So in the new building project, we're going to spread them out a little bit further, because they're more like, smaller classrooms. So, we pretty much have all we need, except for about nine more, plus one in the...
So total, how many do you have?
Hampton Academy, it's about 30 to 40. I'd have to look at that number, but, yeah.
I was curious, that's all.
Yeah, it's a great, great question, and it's turning out to be, we haven't had one, not one, issue with access points this year. So, what we've done has been a great, great thing for the public, is that we look at the building being more open to the public, to resource as well, so something they can depend on as well, so...
What was the consensus of feeling about the video recording and QR code for the town report?
We've had some feedback already, as Ms. Murphy spoke tonight to me about it. As a parent, I'd already called in and saw some of it on Channel 13, the China Post, who've loved it and thought it was great. So I think all of our staff enjoyed kind of doing it. It was just something different, and a great way to showcase all the great things that are going on, so...
So, it hasn't gone public yet, in the sense it isn't in our annual report. The Nathan's worked on the codes, but John put the annual, the three building principals' reports up on Channel 13. We received a call this afternoon from one of our senior citizens, who indicated that she thought that the presentation was inspirational. So, we were quite pleased with that. And so, we look forward to rolling that out in our annual reports. We'll get, we'll get more feedback as it goes to press. Are you, have a concern, or are you...
No, no, just wondering what the feedback was.
And do you work with Keith on the floor plans, updating the floor plans?
Dave Hansberry, my network administrator, has been the one that's been coordinating and built the walls, because we have multi-layers to the floor plans for things like access points or devices. So, Dave Hansberry's the one that usually helps Keith with establishing that floor plan.
So Keith has a copy of...
Yeah, Dave has shared a copy with Keith, but they really originate out of Dave Hansberry's computer, these times, so...
Any more questions? Thank you, Greg.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Public comment? Come on down.
Hi. How are you? Good. Good. As you're probably aware, C, the teachers' unions, meets regularly to discuss school-related issues with our superintendent. Our last meeting was abruptly ended, or canceled. We made repeated attempts to meet with Kathleen regarding our questions surrounding class size and the number of classrooms for next year. We have conflicting information about what is going to happen for next year, so I'm speaking to you because I feel the need to advocate for small class sizes at Marston School. I have a cold. It seems that, it seems the class sizes go up and stay up at Marston as students enter Marston School, and then they go down when these same students enter sixth grade due to the middle school model. All grades would benefit by having small class sizes. This has become even more evident as we look at students through the lenses of ACEs, which is Adverse Childhood Experiences. Teaching has changed. It's not a one-size-fits-all approach. Lessons are differentiated to meet students' ever-changing needs. We teach not only the curriculum, but also social-emotional skills, communication skills, problem-solving skills, and a whole host of other life skills. It may not sound like a few additional students is a lot, but in light of the different student needs that we face today, the reality of it is, it is. Last Wednesday at our staff meeting, I asked Kathleen, when we were meeting, as I wanted to hear the answers regarding class size and the number of classrooms planned for next year before this meeting tonight. She told me to trust her. Well, Kathleen, I'm trusting that you will do right by Hampton students and work to keep Marston's class sizes comparable to our sending and receiving schools. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Michelle.
Michelle? What would you consider an average class size?
Well, if you look at the numbers through the years, which you can find in the annual reports, you'll see that the class sizes, as they should be small at center school, there tends to be a bump. So if there are seven, currently there are seven second-grade teachers, we've heard, but haven't heard definitely, that we'll be going down to six. With the same number of kids, we'll be losing a classroom teacher, a classroom position. The transition is huge from second to third grade. It's the only grade I've taught. I've taught for 16 years in this district. And to have that transition and the class size jump just feels like a lot.
Well, we're looking at the class size in the second grade of approximately 16.3 students.
Yep.
So what would you consider Marston's average class size, ideal class size?
I think 16 students sounds like a wonderful year. There's been one year since I've been teaching here that I've had that, that number of students. It ranges between 18 and 20 typically.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Anyone else? Okay. I have a feeling we'll be talking about this during the meeting, and we'll have public comment at the end of the meeting, too. Okay? Okay. We're jumping around here a little bit.
Yeah.
Frank, Budget Committee, anything to report?
The only thing regarding the Budget Committee is our last meeting was the deliberative session for the town. We had our own deliberative session last week, and no issues were brought forward, and everything is moving to the March elections. On all five, I believe, warrant articles? And if Kathleen would like to add anything to that? No?
Okay. Wellness, remember?
At our last meeting, we talked about the $8,000 that the town, a member of the town committees, is giving to the District to promote wellness, and we discussed how we might like to use that money. We talked about maybe a workout room, the gym situation for staff and students, either through Planet Fitness, or borrowing some of the equipment that Mac's Edge has donated. Biometric screening is coming up March 27th at Marston. We talked about having more fruit on the tables in the teachers' room, and things like that, to kind of help them, and Mary said she'd work on that. Let's see, I know they went to a Health Trust meeting in Concord, a few of them worked. Looking to get rid of, or trying to decrease the amount of plastics we use in our schools, and hopefully, one of the thoughts was to bring back real silverware instead of plastic. Mary said she'd help us look into that. February is Wear Red for the American Heart Association. Let's see, oh, did the staff have soups on on January 30th in some schools, maybe? Okay, good. Let's see. Oh, we talked also about, what a really cool idea, and I think it's already been done by a lot of staff, taking selfies of themselves, doing outside activities, and then posting them in the school. And I said, "Maybe we could not only have the staff do that, but maybe get some kids to do some selfies of them outside doing things in the outdoors during the winter months, and post those as well." Because they're, you know, we're trying to get them to be as active outside as possible as well. There was talk about a staff garden, and maybe we're looking for someone who could help us with a greenhouse or a greenhouse table. And talked about hosting another 5K, as we have in the past, through the Seacoast Education Association, and then some ideas about what kind of summer kickoff we would do to, you know, to keep, to keep the ball rolling as far as health and wellness for students, but staff as well. We really need to keep working on that, because our numbers, our returns have stayed down because we've had a lot of good, healthy staff. And that's important. And that's it.
Okay. New Hampshire School Boards Association, I went a couple weeks ago to the annual meeting. I voted the way you folks instructed me to vote, and we were in line with about 95% of the school boards. If you go to this NHSBA website, you can see the results of all those votes. There were some interesting perspectives from some of the, how do I say, some of the North Country's smaller districts. They're facing some difficult problems. There's something in your report that Kathleen put in, some of the legislative items, and the School Boards Association is a tremendous help to those. So, there was just one other thing. So, yeah, there was just one other thing, and I'm just passing it along. We have sort of a veteran school board, but at no cost, the School Boards Association will send a representative down. And if we wanted to set aside a, an hour or two, they would do a workshop for us. So think about it, if there's any interest, let me know. And I know it would be another two or three hours, but we could say two hours. But it might be enlightening because they have some interesting people there. And that's it for the School Boards Association. Uh, Learning Collaborative, Frank?
Uh, I have nothing to report unless Kathleen would like to.
Brett Department, Pepper?
Yep, we met at the end of last month. They have a, sort of an issue going on down at Tuck Field with piping and whatnot so that the playground isn't up and running like he had hoped. So hopefully, once winter is over and they get the, the pipes fixed, they'll go, go at it. And that's the big one. And then I'll announce it now, but always the Saturday, the week before Easter is the Easter egg hunt at the beach. It'll be in April, I'll give you the date after the next meeting. But yeah, things are going along well, but just, you know, they kind of hung up. So there is no playground yet, but it's all been ordered and everything. So as soon as they get that piping done, hopefully in the spring, it'll be up and running.
When you get that date, maybe we could put it on the website.
Okay.
Because it might be before our next meeting, I'm not sure the date of our next meeting, I'm not sure the date of Easter, so, but we should get that.
The Easter egg hunt is April 13th.
April 13th.
Yeah, and all I know that it is the same day as the family dance for PTA, so.
Okay, yay!
Okay.
It's April 13th.
Yeah, we should get that on the website. Uh, Building Committee?
Yeah, we had a great Building Committee meeting, we went, we toured the building as much as, you know, it's open and, and looks phenomenal. And then we went through the part of the building that is also still being renovated. The best news of all is that we're still on track to open between mid-August and the end of August. The only part that we may still need to do some work with is the cafeteria and the kitchen, correct?
That'll be that through the summer.
Right, and that'll be during the summer. We talked about, a little bit about maybe some air ventilation problems in a couple of teachers' classrooms, but that's being worked on. Let's see. It just, it looks awesome. If anybody wants to submit some ideas for our grand opening, that'd be great. It's, it's just phenomenal. I just, I'm so excited and I can't wait for the community to really get in there, start using it even more. It's, I mean, we really, we really have done a great job, not me, but everybody. And the taxpayers, again, for supporting us, it's huge. It's huge, not just for our students and teachers, but for this community as a whole. Like I said, the good news is we're on target and within budget, and that's the best news of all.
Last, a quick, a quick piggyback, rather than waiting until later, we just met again this morning, the project team and, and the, you know, the trailer gang. Great stuff, it's, it's hard to see what's happening. It was easier when we were doing construction, you could see it happening outside, but now so much of it is inside the 30s and 60s wings. But demolition has really come to a, reasonably to an end, the selective demo inside. And what's happened in the midst, you know, in the meantime is framing, framing drywall, sheet rocking, the mud and the tape. And they're, they're doing prime painting in some, in some areas. Continue to work on some of the small concrete pours over the coming days and weeks for the work on the stairwells and some of the other locations where they had to, they had to pour pads or flooring. So really, it, it's amazing, it's amazing how quickly things, when we did our last visit and walked through, it was amazing to see how much the place had been opened up and how far the demolition had come. So they continue to, they continue to move ahead with all of those things. It doesn't, again, you don't necessarily see that there's that much progress going on, but inside, it's taking shape already.
So I mentioned this before. Uh, once that auditorium is open and the, and the school is open, there are going to be people banging down the door to use the auditorium. You're going to have dance groups and Boy Scouts and who? Are we all set for that onslaught?
No. I mean, we know, we've talked about it, and we're certainly taking steps recognizing that already the gymnasium is a hot commodity. The community room will want to be used, and the auditorium, you're right, is going to be hot. We're exploring alternatives right now to address, give Mr. Lassard some nice tools and some support so that we can schedule, organize, and manage across all three buildings. Center Schools Gym gets some as well, certainly Marston's does, and the Marston Cafeteria and Annex get some business. And on occasion, there are classrooms that, that get used. So it definitely takes something, and it's going to take more than the paper process that we have, so we're exploring alternatives.
You might want to have Greg perhaps meet with some of the Winnebago folk.
They've got school dude, and I'm sure that that's been, it's a good solution. It's not one that has been implemented over the years at, in Hampton, but it's, that's one of the tools we're looking at.
And we may want, we may, I don't know, need to look at some policies as far as usage.
Yep. There's one, there's one big one that's out there that can lead review, but there'll be some additional ones we might want to add, you're right.
Right.
I agree, that's awesome, thank you.
But the easier we can make it using technology for people to book and schedule into those areas, I think, I feel like the sooner we can do that, the sooner we can get people in using parts of the building.
And, and we're also working, we're trying to take as much care as we can with, with the tools of the spaces. So you have an auditorium, and almost immediately, you have to staff the auditorium because every time somebody says, "We'd like to use it," somebody's got to know how to manage and handle the lights and the sound. And we're trying to make, we're trying to provide systems that will be convenient for the use of those that are using it without enormous expense of staffing and without a huge learning curve, while at the same time giving us bandwidth to be able to do some of the neat things that we want to do in the space.
So is, is their sound equipment included in the project?
We're working on it.
Okay.
The project itself didn't envision, it did not envision a huge, um, it wasn't an extensive scope in terms of the sound and the lighting, it was, it was minimal because that's the best that we could do. It's a, it's a middle school, not a high school, it has, and yet we have a really robust program, and we want to do as much as we can there. And so we're continuing to work on that. They're, they're working right now, we talked this morning about the infrastructure that needed to be installed to support the, the immediate and future accoutrements or elements in there. So we'll start with curtains that will do what we need them to do. Over time, we may certainly want a whole lot more in the way of curtains. We'll start with lights and spots and such that we can do a performance. We may certainly want to add to that over time. What we're trying to do is make sure that the infrastructure is there to support the weight, to support the power and the controls without us having to go back in and do major renovation at any point in the next 10 or 20 years.
Um, speaking of performance, where is the plan being performed this weekend?
Downstairs in the cafeteria, that little stage.
Okay. And can people start calling for the fall and even next winter, or will hold off?
I would hold off a little bit longer so we know when that room will be fully ready to go and open for the gym public.
Okay.
Yeah, let us work, because like, even in the, the new bu, the building now that we have, we've worked out some kinks. You mentioned the airflow in a couple of classrooms wasn't working right, they fixed that. We had some sound issues in one classroom that we worked out. So I think we'd all like a little bit of time with that.
To work out the bugs.
To work it out, to make sure that all of the punch list items are done and ready to go. So we'll keep you posted on that, but, but we've been looking at apps, quite frankly, to be able to use that, because otherwise you can't keep up.
Apps, the scheduling.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
And there's a ton of stuff out there, so we just haven't jumped on that yet. And, you know, we try to remind everybody, this is a middle school, this wasn't a high school or junior college. So we didn't go crazy with a lot of the, a lot of the equipment and the sound and the lighting. I mean, you could spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on this. But we tried to be reflective and respective of the age level that we were working with, and that was middle school.
But I, I'm a little concerned about what you said about having accessibility to the lighting and the sound equipment. I think if we're looking it down the road, that we may want to have one permanent individual or a small group of individuals handle that and not the individual groups. Because it's been my experience from private industry, once they get involved and something goes wrong and there's damage, then it's, "Oh, I didn't do it, it was there." You know, and then we'd be, it's going to give us additional cost factors that we may have to look at. So I think we, you know, we have either the custodial staff handle that stuff that is trained, and then obviously if there's a cost associated, path that costs along.
We, we discussed that with our custodians, we're working through that right now with training for all the systems, all the mechanicals so that they have the skills to be able to use those and be able to troubleshoot when they need it to. That same thing will happen with those, because you're absolutely right, you don't want, you know, 10 different people driving the car because it's going to respond differently. Okay.
Okay.
We know that, yeah, thanks, Frank.
Comcast Committee, anything?
Uh, the Comcast Committee did meet, there is a survey that's out there that we're asking people to take. It is online. Uh, also, there are paper copies that were, are, are made available at the library and at the town hall for those individuals that are not computer savvy. Those will be collected, or they'll be reviewed the last week in February, first week in March, uh, for our next meeting, the Comcast. But right now, that's where we're at, we're at the survey stage.
Okay, thank you. Professional Development, Pepper?
Yes, we had a meeting, and as usual, it moves right along, and plenty of opportunities for them to work on the professional development. They have subcommittees looking to title two grants, this group of women for that. It, it, it's just amazing to see how well-run it is, and everything is there that they need. And it, it, it's great compared to what we had in 2021.
Curriculum, Andrea?
I know the librarians met with Dr. Driscoll and some of the Social Studies Committee because they're combining their efforts to identify areas where they can work together. And the librarians are finalizing their ICANN statements. And they are going to a, hopefully, some of them going to a conference in Louisville, Kentucky next fall. That would be awesome if they could attend. Those conferences are great if you can, if we can get our staff to those, just to see the whole scope and the big picture nationally. Our teachers are finalizing their curriculum documents, and they have the National Art Conference in Boston in April, which again, having been to a number of national conferences in Boston, highly, highly recommend seeing the big picture and, and meeting with people nationally about, and, and we also find when you go to those things, your problems are the same whether you're in California, Texas, Montana. You, you have similar problems, and sometimes you have different resolutions that you can take back or bring back. Our teachers, sorry, Social Studies, still working on performance assessment tasks, and I think that's it.
We just added music, we have our meeting this week on Thursday with music teachers.
Okay, what time is that again?
3:15 over at the SAU office.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that.
Right, we just brought that, we had a lot going on, so we waited, so we'll start working with the music teachers, get them started.
That's it.
Okay, Principals Report. Tim, Ms. Lannan?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Aye.
Personally, I appreciate moving up the, the meeting to four o'clock to accommodate us for the drive and the weather. Thank you so much.
Good.
February, we're gearing up for a vacation soon when we come back. February vacation, we'd have a two-week window, just a two-week window to prep before grades close for trimester two, believe it or not. So that's a busy time for us when we come back. It's also a busy time for us academically with enriching ideas like Read Across America activity. We sent out some invitations for guest reading. We have the Week of Wonder coming up, where Screens Free Week, we're just recently changing it to Week of Wonder, which is parents come in for a whole week and they run activities after school, Monday through Thursday, so we're gearing up for that. You know, we have some culminating activities with authors coming in, a lot of reading activities going on in the family, noticing that as well at the end of the month. So a lot of busy things happening as we move through February into March, and we're just moving along. Any questions, you read my report, my newsletter?
I just have one, two questions.
Absolutely.
Um, when, when does the staff, when do they get together to have grade-level discussions about, you know, the data dives that they're doing and things like? When do, when do they get together to do those?
Multiple times we do data dives, just everyone has a chance once a week. We've switched to the professional learning community, so we do that during that time. And we also then extend it during our grade-level times, which is once a month where they have a whole other hour alone on their own to do that. So they have it once a week, and then they also, on one time a month, they have an extra bonus period that we call our grade-level time.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Costa?
Hi. Hi. Good to be here. Yes, nice to meet you.
You may not pick someone you walk up to.
I can snow two home if I have to. Well, you know, I'm thankful for the fact that we have had continuity in instruction this winter. Even though we missed the snow up north and we missed the sledding and the skating, what I've been really appreciative of the fact is that we've had very few disruptions to our day of learning. I know we've had a couple of delayed openings, but by and large, we've been able to really get into the curriculum and there's some great engagement learning that's going on, so that's been really a bonus, I'd say, this year. Questions from our board?
I have a question for you.
Sure.
The NAEP testing.
Yes.
And I know you received a letter that says, "Congratulations, you've been..."
Yes, you've been selected.
Selected.
Yes.
Is that common for you to do the NAEP testing?
Well, as I've been told, it is random. However, they do love the fact that because we are a grades three, four, five school, they're able to get a very large sample from our school. So I do think that we are high on the hit list, shall we say. We're probably chosen every other year.
Okay.
Nathan, would you agree?
I've been here six years, we've done it three times.
Yep, so there it is, it's pretty predictable, right?
Every other year, kind of, you know.
So, um, you know, I understand it's important that we collect that data. It is based on the nation's report card, it does let, it does provide a sampling for the state of New Hampshire, so our kids are part of the sampling, although we don't get really any individual results back. But that's, it's, it's what, a lot of times some federal grant money is probably based on that, and what else? Superintendent, for, for you know?
Certainly gives us a, a picture of where New Hampshire is, and as it relates to the other states. I am concerned, though, you know, Nathan and Lois brought a situation to my attention this week, which I was not aware of. But, you know, we, we try to always participate, I think it's a good, it's good to participate. I mean, you want New Hampshire to be, to always have their best foot forward. But I was concerned about the fact that they wanted to do the testing this year using the computers, which is fine, but their computers. We couldn't use our Chromebooks. But they didn't bring enough Chromebooks with them so that we could run a session of math at the same time as English Language Arts, which would, which would help us to condense the time of the testing for the ch, for the students, and the teachers would have the kids back. So, um, they brought that to my attention, so I'm discussing that matter with the New Hampshire Department of Ed. They have to change up that, that's not right, because it's, we already have, as you know, we have our monitoring testing with STAR Assessment and iReady. We also do the state assessment, and you've always been concerned about the amount of testing that the children do. So I, I intend to share some, maybe some suggestions for them in the future that they can better utilize this time with the kids. So we're on that.
Yeah.
Well, congratulations on being selected. Were you selected as Nathan?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and it was, there was a lot to coordinate this year, and they, you know, the ironic part was, um, you know, of course, they, they, an elementary school, they scheduled it the Friday before vacation, and then they wanted to schedule it on Valentine's Day.
Lucky you did.
And so we, um, we did settle for last Friday. But then there was a lot of logistics that we had to work through, and Nathan Sadler does coordinate that, and there is a lot of back and forth. But we got it in, it's behind us. Yay. That's a good thing.
Any other questions?
First of all, I'd like to congratulate Teacher Jess Singecliff for coordinating the spelling bee, and to Avery Phoenix and Taylor Burnett, the winner and runner-up, I'm sure we'll probably see those books. And also, um, the people that did really, the students that did really well at the, um...
G O, G O B.
G O B. I was also thinking of something else, just went out of my mind. The, yeah, the arts. QPA, Quality Performance Assessment.
Yes.
So that's cut, we're bringing that in, and our teachers are going to be using Quality Performance Assessment?
So it's, it's actually, it's part of the PACE initiative by the state and so Sandborne is hosting this free professional development on how to actually develop quality performance assessments. So it's been great in the sense that teachers are getting great training around how do you create good performance assessments. So working together with the state and really Sandborne and other, it's quite a few, it's happening all over the state, ours is, just happens to be in Sandborne. And they are giving us specific rubrics in terms of how you create them, what they should have. We actually have opportunities to work on them, share them out. We have an opportunity to get some feedback from people that are, are there and to share the work. So it's a good balance of not only getting information on how to develop them, but also having time too to develop them and then getting feedback on how, on how they are. You know, do they really meet the standards of a quality performance assessment? So it's, it's been, it's been great, very valuable. They've given us a great handbook, which I'm happy to share with you, that kind of walks you through the process and so it's been a great opportunity that we've been able to participate.
And on the rubrics, in addition to the performance assessments that teachers are already working on and using?
There, it's really about guidelines in terms of how you would create them. It's, it's really about what are the guidelines that are necessary for a quality performance assessment? As you know, districts that are moving away from standardized assessments are using these assessments in place of. So it's what does a assessment need to have to really meet that standard? So it walks you through what you, what you need and how you might develop an assessment in social studies, science, that would be...
So this is, this is to enhance, let's say, the performance assessments that are already being done or to help them do...
Develop and enhance the practice of people.
Or to help them to do it a little more easily. It's not additional paperwork, though.
No, no, in fact, what's, what's really nice about them is that they are very much about application of content and competencies. So what's really nice is, for example, one of the ones that I can think of that, that might be is, so for language arts, you might have to create, write a commercial as to why you would persuade somebody to do something. So there's speaking, there's listening, there is the actual, you know, language arts content and then there would be...
Process.
Yeah, and then there would be a rubric for how do you evaluate that to ensure they've met the standard or the competency. So it's really, it's really just another way of evaluating student progress.
I don't think it's much different than the work that the science teachers were doing, as you recall, you sat on that, yes.
I guess that's what I was trying to...
No, no, it's the same thing. I think one of the things that all of the teachers were trying to do is develop rubrics so that they could assess what that, what would a quality piece be? What would a piece that needed improvement, you know, that kind of thing.
Okay, and this Q P A will enable them to either do it more efficiently, more effectively or give them ideas on how to do it at all?
Or even revise them.
Or revise it, okay, all right.
We've got, remember, we did, we did some in science, we did them, we're developing some things in social studies, but it's really about evaluating and being critical of your own work and having a group that can help you get there and say, you know, getting their feedback. So it's, it's really a great, it's really great.
I really would think, Andrea, that down the road, as we've talked before, that when the, the teachers have the skills and the administrators working with the teachers have the skills, we'll be able to administer our own performance assessment and be able to report back in terms of accountability about how our kids are doing.
Right.
Social studies doesn't have a test, so if we can have quality performance assessments in social studies, then we can report out to the community, you know, our kids understand eighty-five percent of the competencies or whatever that, whatever it is.
Okay, all right.
So that's where we're at.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Thank you, yeah, thank you for the pennies, your welcome. Thank you.
Mr. O'Connor?
Good afternoon, how are you?
Good.
Yes, you're right, this weekend, Friday night, seven o'clock and Saturday night, seven o'clock, we will be hosting live performance of Murder at the Pie Auction. That's the Hampton Academy Players, our drama club, and you know, we're, it's ironic that we're going to be performing in the cafeteria and the theme is pie. So if you come to the show, you get a pie and some live, some great live entertainment. So that's at seven o'clock on Friday night and Saturday night and tickets are six dollars. January did, January flew by. You have my report, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer anything.
How did Mrs. Dutton and the math team do?
You know what, Mrs. Dutton has had a difficult week. She lives in Dover and there was a death of a middle school student, so I, it's one of those things that didn't take a priority, unfortunately, but it's a small group, there's only five students this year, but small but dedicated group of mathletes.
Any other questions?
No, I'd like to, I'd like to thank Mr. Judson for his help and actually, we do that annual report every year and it is, it is a, it is a task to do one and Mr. Judson put together, you know, helped us put together all the district ones and I got a phone call this afternoon from a citizen and said, we did it, we did it right. And it was someone who, who, I like her opinion because she tells you what you should know, not, not sugarcoat it and she said it was, I don't, she used the word inspirational for me, but...
She did what I stated, so just...
But I was, it was one of the nicest phone calls I've gotten in a while, so I appreciated it. Thank you.
Congratulations to Emily Curry. Curry?
And...
Avinesh.
Avinesh Turif, who are the Spelling Bee and Geography Bee winners, moving on. Good luck to them.
Thank you, thank you so much. Have a great afternoon.
Okay. Jessica Parsons is sick. Greg did his. So I think we're... To the superintendent, yes. Yeah. Drive safely. Okay, superintendent's report.
So I'd ask, we have some donations in my report listed, do you want to do them separately?
No, I think we just do them all together.
Center School Box Tops for five hundred and eighty-six dollars, Marston Box Top for Education for one thousand one hundred and forty-four, Hampton Academy Box Tops, four hundred and eighty-two, Bottom Line Technologies, eighty-one dollars, District Lego, I think you mentioned that, Andrea, the Lego League, twelve hundred dollars, and Kenny Funk Bank for thirty-three hundred dollars. So I'd ask that you accept those donations.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Andrea, second?
I'll second it.
Right, discussion, none? All those, other than what are, some great donations, are all those in favor? Unitedamous?
Very, very fortunate, community is so good to us. I, just a quick update, we, Nathan and I will be visiting with the Beach Precinct tomorrow night and we'll present the warrant articles to them and their committee. I talked with Bob Ladd, so we're all set to do that. I do.
Do you know how to lock that door?
I do, we do.
You do?
Yes, we do.
Wonderful, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
Good night.
Good night.
And we'll also be visiting with the PTA and doing the same on the nineteenth, we'll be going over the warrant articles and reviewing all of that with the PTA. A couple of events just to keep in mind, one of the things that's very exciting is the PTA has been also awarded a grant by the state to do an evening on internet safety. They'll be doing that on March twenty-first. I'm looking at, at Brandy, yes, March twenty-first, that will be held at Marston School for the public. They'll also have a little food, a little evening dinner, light dinner, and then they'll have different stations where they'll be talking about internet safety with parents and students. We are also doing a safety forum as we have done in the past. This is the third one we've done on safety and that's on March fifth. We'll be doing that one in collaboration with the Hampton PD. So I've been in, in touch with Chief Sawyer, Deputy Hobbs and the SRO offices will be joining us that evening and we'll be talking about all the safety, things that have been put in place, the protocols, all of the equipment and what we can talk about. We'll share that with the community that evening. We'll record it so that it can be played back on Channel thirteen for anyone who misses it.
At Marston?
That'll also be at Marston, thanks Pepper, at six-thirty. We've already started to do some advertising for that. As you know, and there's a ton of bills, I put bills in your pocket, I also left some on your desk. I have been very busy trying to address some of them between the Learning Everywhere and the Suicide Bill, there's mental health bills, so I really have, because those were big issues for us here, I'm working with the university on trauma because again, that's an important item for us, so just trying to give you, encapsulate some of the work that we've been doing the last month and a half.
If I may, one of the legislators is going to introduce legislation requiring schools to have teachers have two to three hours of diversity training. That's coming down the pipe, sorry.
So because those are issues that are important to us, I've been able to meet with our legislators, talk with our legislators, go to Concord to share some of our thoughts, so it's been a busy time to do, for that work to be done. I also was part of a forum to talk about Family Medical Leave, that's, that's a bill that's currently in Concord that would provide insurance for families that don't have any insurance and let's say they're out of work. I mean, we've had families whose single family, mom or dad, out of work, no way to have money to, to support them, so there's a bill that would allow up to twelve weeks of sixty percent of their salary to be paid while there on a medical leave. And this is important because without that, the families are really struggling. So I did get involved with that, with our legislators and, and the state organization because it does affect our families. I'm just trying to hit some of the highlights in my report. I think you mentioned most of them, strategic plan, I'm pretty excited about what's happening. We were supposed to meet tonight with elementary, but we postponed it because of the weather. We didn't want parents out with their kids because the kids could come, we were going to kind of watch them in the gym while the parents participated. So I, and we canceled it, we'll, we, we canceled it, postponed it for tonight, but we'll reschedule. Next Monday, we will, we've kind of had, we tried to bunch them all together, so at one-thirty Hampton officials, we have folks from the Sleckman's Office, the Town Office, Recreation Planning Board, a good general across the board, our legislators, we chose Monday because they don't have any hearings on Monday, will join us for strategic planning, followed by community people, business people, different folks in the community that, some people, we, you know, as you know, we posted it on, in the paper and online and we've got a number of people who asked to participate. And then in the evening, we'll do middle school parents, so we're pretty excited. I think it's going very well. We finished the staff, we did the administrators, we've done teachers and support staff and so we're onto the rest of those groups. We do still need a time for the school board, okay, so maybe tonight before we leave, we could grab a time?
Yes, yes.
I mentioned the safety forum. That's pretty, pretty much it.
I've got a question.
Sure.
Not to put you on the spot, but are we looking at anything for tomorrow in regards to delayed start, whatever, based on the weather and the forecast? I know it may be slightly early, but...
Well, I've been...
I know we have to wait till twenty-one, too.
Right, I always talk to Bill.
Yeah.
I, I probably haven't, I'll have another report from Gray Maine, I always get the national weather forecast from Gray, so we'll have an idea, they're predicting the weather is all over the place, so if you will bear with me, I will make that decision in the morning.
She makes me go up four AM.
Check out, it's three-thirty.
Oh, it could be three-thirty if I'm not careful. Now it'll be two AM.
With a, with a yardstick, right?
Exactly.
The other thing that I do, and this is critical, especially on the cold days, we've been calling the bus company, can the buses start? Are they ready to go, you know, with diesel engines you sometimes have, you know?
No, the reason I ask is because it's been a screwy prediction on this particular storm. It was supposed to start at ten o'clock this morning, it didn't start until, I think, two-thirty, three o'clock, you know, and it's supposed to go all night until tomorrow at four.
Well, I listened to Gray Maine, they predicted that it would start at four in the Seacoast, it started at about two-thirty, so they were... They're predicting rain and ice, so I really, it's so hard. I just kind of wait in the morning, I talk with Bill, we get all the data, bus companies and I always call the police department because they're out on the road in the morning. I can't reach the highway department because they're out and nobody's answering the phone, so I call the police department, I talk to the dispatcher who turns me over to the sergeant on, on call and he checks with all his guys out on the route and I get good data from them.
No, no, the only reason I ask is just parents, you know, are concerned and they have to make alternative arrangements.
Well, you know it's a no-win, right? You can't, it's no win.
Thank you. I would just point out, if you all looked on your page thirty-one... At the top under Student Safety and Wellness, number fifteen, that, there was a huge article in the paper, I think it was this weekend, and it was kind of a program that was started by a high school girl who found out that a lot of kids that don't have a lot of money are out of school on those days. So I just wanted to ask, probably Andrea, our nurses provide those items for kids?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, but we may have to do something bigger than that, which can become a budget issue, it's a lot, but...
Right.
Well, I think you're seeing more and more students step up. Nathan's daughter was part of a group that presented at Newmarket, in Newmarket, to their town council to increase the age of which students are allowed to purchase cigarettes to twenty-one and with their testimony to the town council and their persuading the group, they did pass it?
They passed the ordinance.
Yeah, five to two in, in Newmarket and you have to be twenty-one in order to buy tobacco products, so that's pretty good and I think you're going to see more and more of the kids stepping, our students, high school students, middle school students, kids from North Hampton presented over Red Hawk, I believe it is. I think you'll see more and more of that.
Should, should we look at having, look at what the cost factors would be on possibly number fifteen to maybe become more proactive?
Well, we have it, we provide that.
No, I know, I know, I know, I'm talking about the dispensing units.
Oh, yeah.
No, that's what I'm looking at, I'm not looking at, I know the nurses provide that in, okay, but...
Yeah, I'll, I'll, we'll pull the, we'll pull the data, this, I've never priced out multiple, you know, how much a unit costs and what the supply is, but we'll, I'll have that for you when we meet again.
Okay. I think it's better to be proactive than necessarily tell us what to do.
What I heard was that there was, it was very much support when that bill was heard in Concord, so it's reasonable to anticipate that it will become law, so...
Yeah. Any other questions for the superintendent?
Can I go on?
Yeah.
So if I could, go on.
On the funding issues on those bills, have you gotten any more feedback regarding the cost of inadequate education or would you...
Right, that's still in the study committee and they're looking at that. It's all over the place, most recently, there's been bills to support the vouchers or Learn Everywhere, so the numbers are now up to seven thousand dollars for those students, so we're kind of watching that, we haven't gotten anything final. But we are watching funding because when they put into these laws in place, the diversity training, the suicide training, you know... you know, that's gonna fall on our shoulders. And so we're trying to get them to understand that that's, we want to do that. There's no question there. But please understand that there is some issues around the costs associated with running those programs for every single staff person.
Can I, anytime you talk to a legislator, one of the things that I know that they know, to some extent, all of them, but it's really important is, our budget's done. It's in the can. I mean, you can make some choices and decisions about spending. You can deviate from your plan, right? And you can do things a little differently. But it seems year after year, cycle after cycle, the way the legislative cycle works in Concord, they're just now contemplating things that could have financial impact and be mandatory July one for us. Except that the budget that we'll have to afford it, we built it in September and October. We sat around looking at it in November, and it's... And I think, I've said over the last three or four years, multiple times, if there's something you could do, you could try to align better or at least appreciate and respect the fact that when they get slammed for July one, that's a year too soon. They need to put some delays in place. Certainly, it's a good idea, we should do things as soon as we can, but making things mandatory and having to figure it out when they won't make the decision, for instance, until May or June, and your voters will have already approved or not. You'll have already set your budget a couple, three months before, so, thank you.
So I spent a good half an hour, forty-five minutes today on the phone with Foster's Daily Democrat because Senator Waters has put in a bill for school building aid. And the issue that he called me on was retroactive. And of course, I spoke to that in an effort to help the taxpayers. And I did explain to him how difficult this year's budget process was because, as Frank, you've shared with us, that once that principle was put out there in the tax bill, and it did show a hike, and we knew it. We knew it was coming. We informed the public. But it isn't like, you know, you can say all you want until you get the bill, right? And so we knew, I shared with him how difficult it was this year. And for the first time, we really saw some pushback. And we believe it was over the million dollar principle that was now on everybody's tax bill, right, for the building. And so having the ability to have retroactive payment for building aid, and we haven't seen building aid since two thousand and eight, right? So Senator Waters is pushing that really hard. And I know that Representative Cahill from Newmarket and our representatives are very much supporting that. So stay tuned. But everything is kind of still up in the air. We'll see a lot more action. Right now, it's all hearings, all testimony. And we'll see a lot more action come mid-March when they have crossover. Could I go on? Could I go into enrollment? I think it's kind of apropos for the comments from Mrs. Crotta. So it's been, if you look on page thirty-nine and forty, that's the best place to go. Yeah, thirty-nine, forty. Oh, yeah, thirty-nine is right down here. Everybody had that. So would you believe over the last, what, five weeks, we've picked up eighteen new students? So one of the things that you said when we were in budget was to, you know, we left that third grade position in. We never took, you wanted to leave the six positions, but you left the money in for seven. And we were concerned about numbers. And we were concerned about the numbers at second. And I said to you, I will watch those numbers. And I did, and we were watching them. And lo and behold, they've grown to, as of this... And I actually checked it before I left the office tonight. It's one fifteen, okay, in second grade. So they picked up another student. And our total enrollment as of today is ten eighty-seven. So we've picked up, as you can see, plus eighteen students, which is like a classroom, right? So we're seeing, from the reports I'm getting from locals, you know, our community people that share that information, houses are selling, and we've seen an influx of families.
Well, we've picked up thirty-seven since September.
Right, right. I just talked eighteen from last month.
Right, that's a lot.
Yeah. So, you know, I know there's a lot of angst around class size. I understand that if you flip the page, you'll see the class sizes in the back. And it varies. As you can see, this year, the biggest class at Marston was at grade five, which they had nineteen, average of nineteen. So that will drop next year a little bit, I think. But anyway, I am recommending to you, and we have draft nominations in your packet I gave to you. We won't do those until next month, but just so you can have them. But I would recommend that you use the funds that you have in your budget for that position because the numbers are growing, which I'm, which we're really thrilled about, right? Because that's, you know, that's a good thing.
So there would be how many teachers in grade three?
It would be seven.
And grade four, six?
Right.
And grade five?
Six.
Seven, six, six.
Yeah, same number that's there now in Marston School. But remember, you are gonna reduce by one. And I'm suggesting to you that you not do that. That you keep that third grade position.
Well, we didn't, we didn't...
And the money's there, so it's not...
We didn't make a decision to reduce it. We said we might.
Well, we said we'd look at the numbers.
See what the numbers are.
Right, and I, and because my work with, you know who's really helpful? Is the preschools. Because they really have a sense of kids moving in. Like, for instance, Ms. Ginny isn't here, but her school's full. She has a waiting list. I talked to Leslie Hill at my first school, same thing. They have waiting lists. So that sends me a message that our numbers of young, remember how I always was worried about the younger kids? Well, we're seeing that come back, so...
So what would prevent us from trying to find a seventh teacher for fourth grade if those large numbers that are in third grade now are going up to fourth grade?
Well, you only have one oh eight right now in third grade.
Oh, all right, okay.
The whole's just, keep an eye on it.
So let me continue to keep an eye on the numbers like I have in the past. In kindergarten, you kept the seventh grade, the seventh kindergarten. You didn't fill it. And then what, we saw the numbers go up, and you filled it. So I would ask that you continue to do that.
Okay.
Okay? Well, I will continue to do that on your behalf.
Preschool, and that's strictly Hampton? Preschool?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's Hampton. That's just Hampton.
You have twenty-three youngsters that are there because of individual needs.
Well, no, it says thirty-three. We have thirty-three.
Yeah, and ten that are typical kids. You have twenty-three atypical and ten typical kids.
Okay.
Remember, you have some modeling, that that's how the program works.
Okay, so, but the way it is, that they come from out of the Hampton?
No, those are all Hampton people.
Okay, that's all I just want to know, Hampton students.
See, that's another indicator about the number in preschool that has helped us, our own preschool, giving us those kinds of patterns that we needed to see. So we kind of broke the pattern where we were sliding, and now we're seeing it fill back up.
And what are we looking at as far as seventh, eighth?
Well, you're gonna see a decline because right now, the biggest numbers are at sixth, seventh, and eighth. But you're gonna lose your eighth grade at one thirty-nine. You have no, you see that? You'll have no, just think about those numbers and move them up.
Yeah.
So all the numbers, you'll only have one hundred and fourteen next year in sixth grade, or thereabouts. We pick up a few kids sometimes from Sacred Heart. They make that switch. They want to go to the middle school, maybe teens. I'm not sure why, but we see, we do pick up some, maybe in preparation...
Well, it's a sports thing.
And maybe in preparation to go and win a Cunin. I don't know, Frank, but we do see a little uptick in sixth grade there. And then you'll see one fourteen, one twenty-six, and then one thirty-seven, which is the highest. We don't see those numbers. Look at the, look at the rest of the numbers. You'll never see those again.
No, okay. I'm just wanting to keep an eye on that.
Yeah, we will, we will. We'll keep an eye on it. There's nothing I can, those numbers are harder to adjust because of the teams.
Right, right.
And the sixth grade was a decision that you made, I think most of you are on the board, that you wanted to keep the numbers low in sixth grade because of the...
Right, we're at sixteen, roughly, fifteen point seven five. I'm happy with that number.
So, does that help you?
So I guess we need to look at, I'm sorry, I misspoke. I said fourth grade. We need to look at fifth grade next year, potentially needing...
All right, we're gonna keep an eye on that.
Okay, so we could potentially need seven, six, seven teachers.
I don't have that money in the budget, just know that.
No, I know that.
Well, no, third becomes fourth, fourth becomes fifth.
I understand. So you're gonna go seven teachers for third grade, six for fourth grade. But you're gonna need, there's seven in fourth grade now. Why wouldn't you need seven in fifth grade next year?
Well, you might.
That's what we're saying. We might need that, and that's what we're gonna keep an eye on.
You don't know what those numbers are until September.
I'll get a better picture once the winters, you know, once the winter stops and we get a better idea.
September's where everything hits, looking in.
Okay.
People come in, you know, in the summertime.
August and September.
Relocation.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so, other than that, unless you have questions. Yes, thank you. In your packet on page forty-one, you have a notice of retirement from Mrs. Maloney, the registered nurse over at Center School.
Thirty years. Thirty years. Make a motion to accept this with regret. Not seconded.
Second, Pepper. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I have the draft nominations in there. I don't know, is there's anything in particular that is out of the ordinary? If you need to, I would ask that if you have particular questions, that you use your non-public. Calendar, you asked me to go back and look at the calendar for next year. I'd ask that you adopt it formally, as requested. I added two days into the schedule for next year for release days. I met with the committees and met with principals and the PD committee and would suggest that we add two days. One is in October and one in March.
Motion to approve this? Frank? Seconded? Andrea? Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Opposed, abstained, abstained. Three oh one.
I will put that on the website.
Question on the calendar, though, which has no bearing on what we just voted on. Is it somewhat flexible on start time if the bill passes to start after Labor Day?
Of course. I mean, that would be a law. You don't have any choice, right?
Yeah, I don't think we have a choice.
I don't, there seems to be a flavor for local control relative to the calendar. But we're watching that also. We'll keep you posted. It's on your list of...
Yeah, I know. I read it.
I know, I know, I know. I think that's it.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Mr. Loney?
You have all the report except the budget report. That was on your desk tonight. I apologize that you didn't get it in the packet. There's so many things with the annual report and other things being compiled. The only news that's really there, I guess, is that we do have, as we've been talking about, some overruns in out-of-district tuition costs for special ed. I don't think they're going to be as bad as my crystal ball. They don't even be as bad as they look in this financial report. I think there's a couple of adjustments that'll be made this month and that will soften that just a bit. But it's still a couple hundred thousand dollars. You bid off a chunk of that and made some adjustments to try to handle that in the proposed budget for next year. Otherwise, any questions there? Food service and federal grants continue to motor along. Mary had her administrative review from the state. Had a couple of years since we've had that. This time it was at Marston. We're working now on reviewing the report and the findings and responding with action items. We talked about the project earlier. The budget report is there. So if you don't have any other questions, I guess I would, I would suggest, there's been a request made about the timelines for our evaluations across the board. What I did was a little sketch.
Yeah.
Statutory, it's policy. I've got all the statutes and policies in context to back it up. I didn't put all of the material in your packet.
Well, I saw it. There was certainly enough in there for me.
Okay, so the other thing that might make that document more useful, if there's nothing else you want to add, is that it was categorical. You know, I did a category for each employment category. If it would help to see that in a chronological format, I could do that as well, splash it against the calendars that you'd have a sense of this comes first, and then this, and then this. So I can do that as well. Okay.
So the paraprofessionals, they get their work agreements by June first, but the evaluation of those employees doesn't need to be completed and delivered till June fifteenth.
So the language, that specific language is in the new agreement that is on the ballot. And so there was no language that spoke to a deadline for delivery. That was one of the things that they argued for and asked to have added. We added, the language actually says June fifteenth or the end of, the last day of school, whichever is later, I guess.
For their evaluation.
For their evaluation to complete it. Although, they don't, normally, they're done and delivered prior to...
Getting their projects.
Prior to getting their work agreements for the new year and their tentative assignments as well. But in this case, it was a drop dead, and really, everybody was comfortable with the end of school. June fifteenth was just a, was a kind of a placeholder for that.
It seemed like it was going backwards there, but...
Well, and again, that's just as a, that's a fail-safe deadline because really, generally speaking, they're being done and delivered long before that.
Are they being delivered prior to that?
Prior to the June one working ends.
Okay, so are you telling me then by May thirty-first, all those will be done?
Technically. I guess, I wouldn't, I won't tell you that all of them are done and completed and handed to each person prior to May thirty-first. But generally speaking, yet, they are. And now the new language would say they must be by the end of school.
Okay.
I don't know, there was not...
I'm just trying to understand if that was...
There was not a concern that they were not delivered. Here's, I guess, the language. The language came about not because there was a concern that they were late in coming on occasion, but that in a couple of cases, they were missing. They hadn't been done. And so putting a hard deadline in said, you gotta do them because here's a date on which you have to deliver them. And I think they were, they were on the periphery in terms of, they were not, it was not core special ed or kindergarten staff. It was the kind of miscellaneous pairs who maybe had fallen through, fallen through the process in terms of being identified and being evaluated formally and writing such that it would be delivered to them. So we've added that deadline.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, certainly.
I have a question for you. So if we, if we got hit hypothetically with a hundred thousand dollar special ed underage[1728.94]
underage or overage, however you want to look at it, could we go to the special ed trust, have a special meeting and?
You're the agents to expend and we hope we, you could, you could have a hearing. I normally just add it to the agenda and make sure that we talk about it in this course of the public session and say, this is something we're gonna do and then.
Okay.
And then you could submit. Generally, I mean, we've already expended, we've already exceeded special ed budget in the number of the years that we've, that I've been here.
But it's been joined that way for the last three years.
Right, but the challenge is when the bottom line, when the bottom line gets tighter and tighter and you can't support multiple priorities or multiple challenges, then absolutely, we can, and we could do that anytime leading up to the thirtieth of June.
Right, so we've tried to just absorb it.
Yep, we have.
What we may not be able to, we'll see what goes.
And you have, the balance on that accounts above two hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty-two right now, I think.
Yeah, we're looking at a projected two hundred and fifty-four thousand over budget in that particular thing.
In that area alone.
And the problem we have that, if we can articulate it, is that we have to, we have to provide those services. It's pending.
That's right.
We have no choice.
No choice.
So if I can, just for a little bit of offset for the folks at home when they see this, when you talk about the kinds of out-of-district tuitions or the kinds of accumulated costs that we're discussing that drive us into this condition, many of those do qualify for what used to be called catastrophic aid, is now called special education aid. And that, that's a formula that has us paying, you know, the numbers used to be on the top of my head. It used to be that we had to pay all of the first fifty-ish thousand.
Three and a half times.
It's three and a half times the tuition rate, which is now fifteen or sixteen thousand. So it's, but say we have to pay all of the first fifty or so. We have to pay eighty percent, twenty percent of the next fifty. And then beyond about a hundred thousand, we should be getting back reimbursement. All of that is in the following year. So it's a revenue that comes in that we declare. But the good news for the taxpayer is, generally speaking, some chunk of these big, big costs do come back to us as revenues in subsequent periods. But, but it doesn't, it doesn't relieve us, it doesn't relieve us. The state doesn't always fully fund that program. They normally, in the last few years, they've had a habit of funding that in the seventy percent range-ish, sixty-eight, seventy, seventy-two. So we don't always get all that we're entitled to. But, but there is that offset. But again, that doesn't relieve us, relieve us of the responsibility of eating the expense, right? Of recognizing that expense and seeing it in the course of the year in which it happens. Just wanted to make sure I shared that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a policy second read, EDA, Ed Television Programming.
You find it on page fifty-three.
Fifty-three. We want to have a motion to accept that. Make a motion to accept. Frank seconded. Andrea, any discussion? All in favor? Four zero. We have.
Can I just ask superintendent real quick? That Intelligent Lives that you went to see, is that something that could be put on our channel thirteen?
Nothing, we have the properties to do that. People are renting that film. But let me check on that. They did it at Winnenconne, the director of special ed did it. And it was part of the Dan Hamid films that he's done. It was excellent.
Right.
I'll check in on that. I don't know if there's still, you know, rights that oversee that. So I'll check with Dan.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, great question.
While we were on policies, recently, there was an issue, I'll shorten it, where a teacher in another district got into hot water, okay? And some other teachers from her district and another district went and testified on her behalf. I know the superintendent knows what I'm talking about.
I know what you're talking about.
Anyway, some teachers got into some hot water and it actually caused the superintendent of that district to resign. And my question is, do we have any policies that we could look to for teachers testifying? Because I know Bedford just came up with one that we might want to look at.
No, and we don't. And it's interesting that you bring that up because one of the pieces of legislation that I've been watching is exactly what you just said. That the law would say that, that there should be local control and that the local district should have a policy to address that issue.
Okay.
We, we don't have one, but I'm sensing that I can go and do some research for you and bring some suggestions. Pepper and I can do that in our policy committee and then bring it back to you.
Sure.
But very few districts have it. I've not seen that. There's a whole issue, the issue is the right to freedom of speech. And that's where it's getting clogged down in the legislature. Some groups say this is the right freedom of speech to be able to say what you think. And the other group is saying, whoa, you know, you're supporting somebody who did some inappropriate thing. So it's, it's really, it has quite a battle right now, but.
Looks like House Bill five twenty-nine.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, it is, okay.
Five two nine.
I think that the idea of local control and local policy is a good one. So I would, I would say yes. Pepper and I will put that on our list.
It was also my understanding on that particular case that we're talking about is that those people that supported the individual really weren't informed about all the facts. And it would just don't know. I don't want to get into the case. I just, you know, I just think it's good to have that, so we're all aware of it. Minutes of January eighth. Make a motion to accept. Moved, Frank.
In looking over it, on page fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine. There must be a spelling error.
Yeah.
I saw that too, but I didn't.
Yeah, Mr. DeLuca said a letters rather than a letter. So if it's, you can't have A as single and then letters as plural.
Middle of the page.
Middle of the page.
Above the motion.
Oh, yeah, I see, I see.
Yeah, I see. That's on.
It's just a typo.
Just so you know, those letters do go out to your legislators and Senator Sherman. So just so you know.
Well, as long as you're on that sentence, legislators doesn't need an apostrophe there. It's just S.
Yeah, there you go. I missed that. Hey.
Yeah. Okay.
Who seconded that?
Who typed this? Okay, moved, was it moved, Frank?
Yeah.
Seconded. Pepper, any further discussion? All those in favor? Four zero. The other pepper? Okay, now. Did we have anything to sign?
Nine public minutes.
How about the? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. On page sixty-two? Yeah. That's not the point. Motion to accept the non-public. Make a motion to accept. Frank. Provided that the grammar is correct. Seconded, Pepper. All opposed in favor? And we should note tonight that Ginny is excused. And I had said that we were gonna have a public comment.
Just before that, just know the PTA newsletter is in front of you, just so you have it. I just, we just got it today, Brandy, right? So I wanted you to have it for this month.
Congratulations, it's awesome, thank you.
It's great.
It's really cool.
Great.
Nice job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
So I'd like to thank you for making sure that that, that third grade position is going to be in there. That's really important. Michelle spoke to the importance of having, really helping our students with the transition. And that really helps. So, but I'm, I'm a little confused. If you can just kind of clarify some things for me, I'd really appreciate it. So I'm looking at the numbers right now. And the numbers and, I, I don't have the current numbers. I wasn't given those. So I'm just going based off on the most recent numbers that I have. Is currently in fourth grade, we have one hundred and eighteen. Is that correct? We have.
In eight, no.
In, in, in fourth grade.
Right now it's one seventeen.
One seventeen, okay, I, all right. So I was told one eighteen, so one seventeen, so.
We, we, we just got.
Well, I had spoken to fourth grade teachers yesterday and I was told that everybody had seventeen except one.
Yeah, this number comes right off of the power school, so we get it right off of our.
Okay, that's, it's one student. It really doesn't make that much of a difference. So then those would be going into, next year would be going into six. What you're currently saying is, at this point, that's what it's, that's what you're budgeted for.
Fourth grade goes into fifth grade.
Four, right, so fourth goes to fifth grade. And then that would be a hundred and seventeen students. So would we be starting out with approximately, what, nineteen point five in our classes? So some would have twenty and some would have nineteen.
Well, that's why, that's why we talked about kind of leaving things a little bit open and watching the numbers carefully.
Yes, and I, and I think that's great. I really appreciate that. But what I didn't understand was the comment about, well, we don't have it in the budget. It's not in the budget because it hasn't been.
We don't have it in the budget for twenty teachers at Marston. We have it in the budget for nineteen teachers.
Right, so if.
However, we're all aware that we need to keep an eye on this. And if something needs to happen, then we will need to take action of some sort to rectify that situation.
So then the budget would be adjusted somehow to accommodate because.
All I can tell you is that we would try to.
Right.
Do everything.
Do everything that we can.
Right. Well, you know, I'm, I'm just, I don't, I'm, I'm trying to understand why we weren't budgeted for twenty in anticipation of, of looking at the numbers. Because we've been going seven, six, seven like that.
When we did the budget?
Yeah.
I can, let me try to address that.
Yeah.
Okay. Think a year back. Okay, so when the budget was created, it was created in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, if I get my correct, all right? For twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. It goes to the voters for a vote. Back then, if we, when we were looking at numbers, okay, and we didn't eliminate the position, we kind of kept it in limbo because the numbers were down, okay? In fact, in September of this year, we addressed the issue of enrollment and enrollment was basically somewhat down. It's picked up dramatically.
Dramatically, absolutely.
Okay, in the last, I'm going to say, we've been steady at approximately, in September, we were at ten fifty total students for the entire SAU.
Yeah.
We've jumped up to ten eighty-three as of February first. A majority, a majority of those came in.
Right.
I'm sorry, ten eighty-seven.
Right.
Okay. That happened in February, that, okay? Because we were at ten sixty-nine January first. So between January and first, we've had a dramatic increase in numbers. Okay, that was unforeseen back in, when we were doing budget back in September of twenty seventeen.
Well, no, well, the, the budget for next year was just worked on in, in November.
In November twenty eighteen, and if you look at, we had ten fifty-seven. That's the number we were working on.
So just to be clear, if we have, we start next year at the numbers that we have right now, we would have nineteen and twenty for each fifth grade class? Is that correct?
That's what we're going to look at and review after March elections to see whether we go for the budget that we proposed or if we go to a default budget. If it goes into a default budget, there's gonna be some dramatic realignments, if I may say that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because we're gonna have to get back together again and look at the numbers and look at what happened.
So, so I guess anyone was, there's no cut and dry answer that we can give you at this time. All we can do is say that we are gonna keep a very close eye on it. And I would assume that as a board, we will do whatever it takes to make sure that the students get what they need.
Right.
Within our, within our realm of.
At this time, I, I heard the superintendent saying it would be seven teachers for grade three.
Yes.
Six for grade four and six for grade five. However, we're gonna keep a real close eye of grade five. And I know that our concerns are the same as your concerns.
Absolutely, especially since when they go into eighth grade, then they're looking at about fifteen per class. And you know, we, we picked up the science assessment that we take, so we're doing language arts and math and science. So, you know, thank you once again, really thank you so much for ensuring that we have the seven teachers at third grade. That's, that's critical and, and thank you for keeping an open mind and, and recognizing that fifth grade students have those, those needs as well. So, thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay. Calendar review?
The only thing I would ask, if we could look at a couple of dates for that strategic plan, it would be about an hour, an hour and a half of your time.
Thank you, folks. Take care of things.
Thank you.
Drive safely.
I, I think a couple of dates, and it can be, and it can be in March. This is not a road race on the strategic plan. We're, you know, we're, we're, as you know, we're balancing a lot of plates here. But March, sometime in March, you have, and the other thing you have to do tonight is set your meeting date for March.
Yes, yes. But let me just, 'cause I missed it. When is the safety forum? Just give me the date.
March fifth.
March fifth. It's right here in the calendar. It's six thirty. Okay. And it's going to be where?
Marston.
Marston. So let's go to the next thing, which is the next school board meeting because it's scheduled for the twelfth and that's elections.
Right.
So we had a couple of options.
Right, you can't do this, you can't do anything that week because that somebody, if they wanted a recount, they could wait until Friday to do that. And then if, if everything goes well, then on the eighteenth, you would be sworn in by our, our town clerk, so.
Nineteenth?
Right, if we did it on the nineteenth, we, the budget committee is in here. So we would have to do it in a, a different location. Oh, I know, the PTA. We don't want to, you don't, I'll have it on the same night. Because Nathan and I are gonna present, so. In your April meeting is April, and I just looked at that and I forgot what it was.
I bet it's the ninth.
I think you're right, it is the ninth.
The ninth.
Yep. Wow, so.
What's wrong with the twentieth?
Of March?
Yeah.
Just has to be after like five thirty.
Yeah, I know.
Because we have a. Wait a minute, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Forget Wednesday, how about Thursday? Thursday's open.
Thursday's fine with me.
Okay. Do you mind if we just have John video it and then we'll?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where will it be?
Why don't we do it at the SAU?
At the SAU office.
That way we're really, oh, wait, we have to have a positive.
I don't know, I just find, I feel like we, we need to have people to be. So if we could do it at Marston in the library, you've done it there before, it was very, it worked out well.
Six o'clock, Marston School.
Why can't we don't use that near candidate?
Well, we're still in the, you know.
It's full, it's full right now.
Yeah, can't move. Six or six thirty?
Find your room. You don't want to.
You want six or six thirty?
Six thirty.
Okay.
Okay. All right, twenty-first, six thirty.
Okay, so now we need a strategic meeting, planned meeting. And I think it should be after the twelfth. In case there's a new board member. We don't know, there might be a new board member. Okay, how about the twenty-seventh?
All right, that's one possible day, that's great. Can I have one more just in case?
Twenty-eighth? Okay.
What's that for?
Safe, strategic plan?
Okay, we'll do it in the afternoon, like, is it like a four o'clock?
Four o'clock.
I'm not, yeah, okay.
And we can do it at the SAU?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So the twenty-eighth is a. Thursday. I know, but it's a emergency, it's a just in case.
Yeah, I'm gonna shoot for the twenty-seventh.
If necessary. It's gonna be one of those things. I know we need to go into non-public. Is there anything else we need to do before we go into non-public? Okay, so call for non-public under RSA ninety-one, A colon three, two. I'm not sure if I have it right. Moved, Frank, seconded, Pepper, roll call, Frank. Pepper? Yes, yes. Okay.